Thank you for getting us on the schedule. We're here again. We can sit, okay? Here again, the last time we came to this selectmen was unfortunately three years ago. And we gave you an RFP hoping that we could go up in your price and find out what a solar field would cost. I understand a lot of things going on at the town. The school, the council aging, but we never went back in your direction. So, nothing happened. We started, uh, we started a meeting probably about a month ago. The new SMART program.
Before you go any farther than that, we always want the audience to realize what we're talking about. Where are we talking about putting the solar field?
The old landfill?
The landfill.
The capped landfill, our landfill.
Our landfill.
Just so we're clear.
Okay. The program for National Grid, uh, actually the whole state ended probably three years ago. So what we're trying to do is, we knew another company, you know, program was coming up. It's called the SMART program. And we wanted to be prior to proactive to be ready in case, you know, we get the vote, it'd be okay to go. It opened up in December of 2018. And the backlog was sub right, that it's already on block eight.
Right.
Block eight is almost the end of the program. We have heard that it's gonna go, they're gonna extend it nine, 10, 11, and 12. Of course, the SMART tax credit's gonna get less and less and less as the blocks continue to go on. But here we are. And we wanna try and get direction for you guys to find out whether you wanna get a solar farm at the U Lancer. We've had requests from a number of companies. There was one company that come down and gave us a lot of information. We walked the site. The site is perfect. He had, he had no problems with the site at all. We can easily get a one megawatt system up there. And also Steve, he was there at the walkthrough, some of his concerns about still having the access road through the site. We can still do that.
One megawatt, what would that provide electricity to?
Right now, pointed to the, the information we got from the town on the electric bills, we have probably about a point eight megawatt of usage. So for point eight to one, one megawatt.
Is that for town buildings?
That's town buildings, yes, only town buildings.
Okay.
What comes?
To what the other ones?
Lighting.
Yeah, whatever bill you have, the total comes up to about point eight.
Okay.
So one megawatt would give us expansion, and also we'd have access to sell. So that's why we're looking for it. The new systems that are out there now are a little bit better. The panels are more efficient. They're higher, so we, we use less, so we don't, that's why we can do more if you have them. By doing that, I mean, as a committee, we think the town should own it. Because that's where you're big bang, it's for your luck. It's a cash cow. Solar panels, there is no moving parts. All they do is produce electricity. But, these were here with the budgets. We understand that the town maybe not, don't wanna build it. And personally, after I've experienced what went through in the council aging, I don't think the town could afford it. And I'll think the town would have enough time to do it, to get to the, to the point before the systems are really sold out again. So we're left with kind of two options. One is to lease it, and then buy it. Lease to buy. In most systems, the lease is, is pretty much, the person that builds it, their money's back in seven years. So we'd be looking to buy it at year seven, or maybe eight. It would be bought at market rates. We have estimates that the site would cost anywhere between two point five and three million dollars. And again, that's still the budget, so they can fluctuate one way or another. But at year seven, they recruit their, their cost of building. So they wanna get rid, they wanna sell. So what would it be, I don't know, maybe a million bucks, maybe a little bit more? Whatever market rate is for, for a landfill, solar field at year seven.
Yeah, what, what would it be, the life expectancy of the solar field if we bought it after seven years? How much longer would we be able to get benefit from it?
Okay, a lease is good for 20 years. That's, that's the way the system is, the SMART program is set up for. The SMART recs, uh, tax benefits that you get for selling, it ends, it's only 20 years lease, that's it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying.
Okay, but here's, here's the good part.
I'm, I'm looking at the solar panels, how long will they last? Will they last up to 20, 30 years?
Good part is, solar panels go probably 30 years easy. They give you warranties of 25 right now. And what I'm looking at for the town is that at year seven, you're gonna have free electricity for life. Because you can replace the panels after 30 years if you have to.
Another, another law, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Under the warranty too, for the first, those 25 years, uh, what they do is they test them, they rate them. And if, if one of the panels isn't producing up to snuff so to speak, it's replaced with a 25-year warranty.
And the warranty is transferable?
Yes.
In which case, it would still, he, he said 30 years seems like nothing. You know, uh, for them to last that, that long, 30 years is probably its life expectancy. You know, well, even, may even go beyond that. But the few that he's had experience with it, had to, that were producing up to, up to par, they've just replaced the panels, they just take them out, put a new one in. I mean, that's, that's about the full maintenance of, of the whole system.
Should we, if we were to lease and then buy it in seven years, how do we maintain it?
Maintain on, on the system itself, maybe once a month, you check the system to see how it's going.
But the panels themselves, if some damage happens to one, for somebody to say a storm comes, branch goes down?
We have a control system. Control systems are put in place so that if any panel, panel fails, it's in a string, say a string 20. We know that, okay, string number 52 has a problem. So you go out and unplug string 52, and then you find out which panel's broken, and you can replace it, and then you put it back in again. And you don't have to shut the whole system down.
And we can have Scott do this, right?
It's plug and play, honestly.
Yep.
Really, it's, it's kinda that easy.
I just wanted, I just wanted to commit you, Scott.
Appreciate it.
For 30 years.
It's pretty efficient, it's pretty efficient if you figure that most maintenance they have to do is once a month. That's about, as efficient as you're gonna get.
I mean, landfills have a priority for National Grid, so I mean, we do have a, that's the plus side. If we're ready, and we are a landfill, our chances are better than someone else that's just got a site that they wanna be online.
What's the turnaround time if we were to get permission for something like this to go forward? How long would it be before it's operational?
Uh, they need, it's three to four months to get approval from National Grid. That seemed to be the standard. So once they get all, everything put together, it's three to four months before National Grid will say, okay, yeah, you're accepted. And then you have to build all time, probably three to four months again to build it up.
Do we have, do we have three phases going down here, Mark?
We do. Yeah, we do. Is that three phase going to the, how far?
No.
So I don't matter. They'll, they'll, the poles are down there anyhow, so they'll bring it down to the, to make the car.
It's not that far, I mean.
Straight to the car.
Exactly.
So you look at, you know, National Grid is gonna charge you what they're gonna charge you.
Right.
And it could be 250,000, it could be 500,000. It's, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's wide open.
You can't put, you can't put your finger on it, they can charge what they want, unfortunately.
Yeah, the field down on River Street, they charged 1.2 to get those poles down.
Yeah, that's quite a ways.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I think the good part of it is, is there's a lot of good, good features to this here for the town. And you know, the, the other program that's coming out is, the big thing that's happening is storage. That's something we can add later on. Because National Grid, uh, solar, solar panels don't give National Grid annual benefits. Because during the day, everyone's getting the power pumping in. It's from 4 o'clock to 9 o'clock at night that they need the power. So there's another incentive, but that would be down the road, to put a storage facility in. And you'd get, you'd get more of an incentive from National Grid to put that in. And you give them the power, you save it during the day, and give it to them at night. Again, it's a plus.
What, what's the time for us to apply for this?
I figure we have to, we have to be out to bid, uh, probably by the end of September, October. If we have that out there, you get a month of bidding, and then you get, have approval, and you'd have to have them apply to National Grid, that gives them four months. That brings us right to the annual meeting, town meeting, if we have to get approval for it. And there's another thing too, you can always go with a, or PPA. But all you're gonna get is leased in the land, and maybe a 10, 15% reduction in the power.
So, we, the town would still pay the electric bills for like the next seven years? As, as that's the big cost?
You, we would be getting something from the company. We haven't figured it out, how to work it out yet, where they get leasing for the land, and a 10, 15% reduction in the cost. So you could be getting anywhere, say, $70,000 a year, up for the seven years. Now you could take that 70 grand and put it into account to help buy it out.
To help buy it, yeah.
So that, so that you're not losing anything, because you're gonna pay the bills anyhow for seven years. But at the seven, at the end of seven years, you get a half million dollars you can probably put towards buying off the system. Or you can take that 70 grand every year and then just get on a loan and then reach that out. But the SRECs will help pay for that. I, I think three years ago, I think Charlie, you mentioned that the town was paying about 270,000 a year, or 275,000.
I don't know at this point.
It was roughly around that, that figure. So that's what you're looking at, 270 grand a year, throughout.
So I guess what I was trying to understand was, in seven years, we're gonna be looking at borrowing the $3 million, or whatever.
No, no, you, seven years of the market value, so they've already recruited their cost. So you're probably looking at a bio, maybe a million, then in a half.
Okay.
So it would be a lot less than, than the build-up cost from the beginning.
So then, it would take us five years to recoup that cost, and then, this basically, then, the cost of energy in the town, for the town.
Correct.
Would cost nothing except for the maintenance contract that you'd have with the company.
Yeah, would you be minimal?
Sounds like you guys have looked into it.
Can I ask Sandy, and I'm putting you on the spot here, as always. A two and a half million dollar bond, what would it cost to service that?
Well, what percentage of your interest rate do you wanna assume?
Well, something current.
So the, if you look at the, the two million dollar bonds that we have.
Well, if we're talking 20 years, we're talking 125 for principal, and the first year is 100,000, 4%.
So it would be a little bit more than that?
Okay.
I was just trying to guess if, if we did go out to bond it, how long it would take to actually be in positive territory?
It would be pretty early.
Yeah, that, that's, if we're looking at 270.
Well, that, that almost seems like a wiser financial decision.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking at that angle of it. I mean, it might be a hard sell, but I think the.
You mean to build it ourselves?
Yeah.
No. No. Because if we had to build it ourselves.
It would take longer.
It would take longer, but the upfront cost would be more than we could, we could afford. It just, it just wouldn't work. I think, I don't think we have enough time to do that.
Yeah, the time is the issue.
To do that would take us a year before we can get all our act together.
Block eight's already starting to discourage a lot of development, yeah.
And I'm telling you, by the end of the year, eight, nine, and 10 are gonna be close to, I mean, nine, 10, 11 are gonna be close to be gone too. So we've gotta, we've gotta react to this here fairly quick. If we don't, no, we don't have that much time to, to get into it. So I didn't think it was gonna move that fast, but it has.
So what would the, so the town would be getting, for the first seven years, the land, and, and some discount on?
And a discount on your, on your electric.
I mean, it doesn't seem like a lose in any event.
But it almost seems like you should start paying for it now, so when the seven-year mark hits.
Yeah, right. Well, the whole thing's getting crazy, I mean, they're actually now installing on working bogs. These panels are gonna float. I, I'm not sure how that's gonna work and grow berries, but that's, I just had a proposal come to me for that.
There is a discount too, that, uh, they were, the, the one person that came to our meeting, he was kinda emphasizing the fact that where it's a capped landfill, there's, there's benefits that don't go with a bog.
Right, right.
Or a project and whatnot, because it's a capped landfill.
Because of capped landfill, yeah. Actually, that helps us, you know, we ended up paying a lot of money to cap that landfill. It'd be nice to actually have it benefit us a little bit at this point.
I think too, when they, when they first came over here, he was first talking to us, uh, he had a lot of questions as far as topography and, and, you know, how the land was set up out there, and then made arrangements, like Jerry was saying, to meet with Steve to walk it. And when he, what, because we were talking about the hill.
Yeah.
You know, the hill that went down that Mike presented through. He was more excited over the hill, thought it would be a better situation. Because of the way it faced, and, and, uh, you'd actually generate during those peak hours that Jerry was just talking about, between the, the four and nine, he said because of the hill, you'd benefit from that. And then, of course, the, the new technology that was out there, uh, it's, of course, it's constantly, you know, improving and whatnot, becoming much, much more efficient, that it would be a strong possibility that he might be able to generate more than the one.
Bottom line.
Kill maybe like a 1.2 or something.
Who, who would negotiate the contract?
That would be up to, I mean, we would, we would, by putting a, a request or proposal out, we'd rather them to give us all the information.
Right.
So if they're gonna come in, it'd be up to the board of management to, uh, come up with the, uh, the final. Or Sandy would be involved, because it's all part of the money end of it. I mean, we'd certainly have to sit in and go over everything with it too, so we, you know, make sure nothing is going by that we don't know.
I, do you have enough information this evening to make a decision, or you wanna postpone this?
Well, I, I don't have a problem with an RFP, I think that's.
The RFP is basically the same one I gave you before, the only, why not, they wanna change it, I don't know, because it's no longer the E-Rex, it's the SMART program. And I put some dates in there, dates without change. The cost for going out for a request, I mean, the other thing we, we need is them to have a, you know, them would have to come down, do the walkthroughs. We're more than happy to.
Yeah.
To do that meeting. We would need the engineers from the landfill, that are on, you have, there's a company that does all of it.
Right, yeah.
They would have to be here for any questions that may come up.
Right.
And we'd have to tour the, tour the site.
It's a ballast system, so there's no penetration of the liner.
No penetration at all, no.
Is there any issues if the water testing came up bad?
Uh, there's been no major testing, everything's been right in line with what it's supposed to be. So there's no foreseeable issue in the chat with the cap. And we've also mentioned, uh, you know, the company that was going up there, you know, fencing, uh, is a blimp along the cemetery side, and also the front. I know Steve talked to them about, uh, the front, uh, fencing on the, on the.
Oh, the residential side, the residential side.
Right, right, right. Steve, you good with this?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Why?
Because I've talked to Cal, how they're getting all those buildings, they've got like three or four panels.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Have you talked with any of the other towns to see if they've?
We've talked with other towns back three years ago, so, uh, at that point, uh, not many towns were having their own, again, because of uncertainty, I guess, people would. But I mean, it's proven itself, so I don't know what towns right now would go on through the lease program. But, uh, I just, I don't see any downfall to it, I really don't. I think it's a system that, maintenance-wise, is new. I mean, everyone's knowing that it's a cash cow.
Right, that's the only thing, the timings of the essence is what boils down to. Before the, the blocks all gets sorted out, gets sold out, you know, like they said, the eight block, everywhere I understood it, was supposed to be the last one in, in out of the states.
And the subsidies to Jerry's point, reduce as they go up in number.
Yeah, it's been 4% per block.
Yeah.
Since block one.
Okay, so what you're looking for from us tonight is to request us to give you permission to go, uh, put requests for proposals out?
That would be yes.
Yeah.
Get that out there.
I, I, there's no downside, you, we don't have to do it.
No, but if anything comes in and then, and everything that we've been told, and we've looked at, and the budgets are, are wacky, and, uh, seven years is not, it's gonna be 10 years before you do it, well, you can save the heck of it.
Yeah, there's no, there is no downside.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to.
Happy to second that.
And what was the motion?
To, motion to allow a request for proposal to be, um, sent out for putting a solar field on the capped landfill on Hemlock Street.
Thank you. Just a second.
If you can email it to me.
I'll email it to you, what I'll do is I'll update this here, all the same way you said before, so I don't look at it, you might have some changes in it. But I'll get it out to you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah.
Steve? Just in case, do, um, just going up for a minute. Steve had put in a request to the board about buying a new lawnmower for the cemetery. This would be out of perpetual care account.
That's the standard, the standard.
Oh, no, you can't do, okay, you can't do lots of grapes, because you have to go to town, you, you don't wanna go to town yet. So you have to do perpetual care, right. We have $58,000 in interest in perpetual care, which can be used. The machine is what, about 8,800?
Eight, eight, three.
Okay. And the board can approve it without town meeting?
Yeah, we have a letter here from the mechanic saying that it has numerous issues with it, and it's how old?
Uh, 2000, it's a 2006, but we did it in 2007.
So it was already used when you got it?
No, it was, it was brand new, it was just beginning.
Yeah, right.
Well, it took, took some time to get it over to the parking lot.
Well, it's 12 years old, and it gets a lot of use when it gets used.
You're talking eight hours a day. Or seven.
Yeah.
The board?
Is this typically how you use money like that?
For perpetual care, yeah.
Yeah. And it's used to mow the cemetery?
Yes, mow the cemetery.
Makes sense then.
I'll, I'll move that, we, uh, release the money from perpetual care.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't want you to leave in case they could have questions, but.
There's an asterisk to that.
Tomorrow, yes, yeah. Yeah, I, we'll get a note to Sandy saying you're authorized, but, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Hey Charlie, I think we have a few minutes.
Well, why don't we start off with the routine stuff?
I'm sorry. Gordon?
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 15 for 228,719.04. Venda warrant number 16 for 388,824.058. Withholding warrant number 17 for 77,680.98. Ambulance, ambulance commitment from August 5th to August 11th, 2019 for 29,854 cents. And ambulance commitment from August 12th to August 18th for 101,245.47 cents.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I move to approve the following warrant, vendor warrant number 18 for 318,740.15.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second. I move to approve the following selectmen bills dated August 27th, 2019. Uh, from the selectmen's expense account, 40 dollars to the MMA September meeting. Which is the Mass Municipal Association.
Second. Oh, oh, no, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, we don't, I'm sorry.
Don't jump to that.
Town Hall Electricity for 1,447.058 to National Grid and NG Resources. Selectment expense account, 42 dollars to the Express Newspapers. And then, um, from the law account, 350 dollars to Chris Carmichael, uh, for the special zoning determination for 395 chemistry. That's it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey Charlie? Unless you want to do your road openings now?
Um, just a road opening for, um, uh, section of 73 chemistry and regular drive, which was 3P only. Uh, and the only thing is, uh, one detail box, so, and everyone has to sign off.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to do the recycling abatements at this point in time?
Do you each have a copy of the big list?
Didn't we already do a big list?
We don't do anything small around here, you don't get a big deal. In, inasmuch as everyone on this list, I went over as many times, and hopefully other board members have, they meet all the requirements that we've set forward to get an abatement from the services. They've sent letters in to show that their vendors, in fact, have this recycling abilities, and they have been picking up their trash.
With a couple exceptions that.
Yeah, a couple exceptions, yeah.
Those are second ones, okay.
Yeah. So what I'm recommending is that we will call the numbers off of the bills.
What I would recommend is simply that you approve the list that PM gave you.
Projects that all have private hauls, that's what this list is right here.
I wanted to call the numbers off.
I'm sorry.
You can't, if you'd like.
If you wanna call them, I, I would let you, you can do that.
Might lose my voice. Um, we will, is there a motion to approve the list as presented?
Would make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And PM gave you other, a couple of.
Okay, so then there's another one, um, there are two.
2630, um. He's looking for a, we received confirmation from the building department that the house is under construction, and no occupancy has been issued. So there's nobody living in the house at this time. And he's not creating any trash, I'm assuming.
Well, if he is, he's taking care of it in his own dumpster.
So what's the board's pleasure?
Would move to abate bill.
2630?
2630.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a bill number 258, residence legal addresses in Middleborough Way is town pickup for trash recycling. Submitted electric bill showing no usage. Is there anyone at the house, do we know?
He says no one is at the house. He just has this piece of property, no one's there. And if you see that electric bill, it's running, like, you only have like 20%.
And I asked PM about the water, and they have a well, so it's not a matter of turning the water off situation.
Well, I'll, I'll seek a motion for it.
Move to abate bill 258.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a liaison list for different departments and committees. Are there any changes, is anybody?
Well, you have a bunch of blanks, for one thing, that need to get filled in. And then, as you mentioned, whether the three of you wanna switch any of them around.
We have ADA coordinator.
What is the responsibilities of that?
You tell me what you need done as ADA, right? Actually, I end up being the ADA.
I was gonna say, you end up being the coordinator.
Refer to Charlie.
Maybe put Charlie down for that one. Animal control officer, the liaison. I've, uh, I'm doing.
Police.
The police and the fire chief, so I'll take that on unless somebody else wants it. Capital planning committee is, is, Charlie's the advisor on that committee.
But you have a member from the board who serves on it.
Tom?
Ah, sure.
Financial management team, Charlie, are you still on that?
Well, I'm on it, but again, there's a member of the board who serves.
Gordon, are you interested in it?
Sure.
Halifax Emergency Management.
It's a liaison to the fire chief.
I'll, I'll take that.
Halifax Fireworks Committee.
Take that.
Someone's.
Hallies in Halifax.
You can take that.
And MDT Advisory Board, I was the, I'm, I'm the advisory. And MMT Advisory Board, I was the, I'm, I'm the advisory on that, is there alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
It means a trip into Boston, down to downtown Boston to sit on the advisory board.
I'll, I'll do it.
Who's gonna do that?
Tom.
Tom, okay.
Someone's gonna remind me where, everything I signed up for because I'll forget.
Well, pay more update on this.
Town Government Study Committee, and that's the last one that's unoccupied well.
Hasn't met for a while, but if it does, we need somebody on from the selectmen.
I'd like to do that. I, oh, I will do it. I said I would like to do it, I mean, I want to clarify that.
Okay, well, we, we, do we have a, Gordon, would you like to have to be the coordinator of the liaison for the school?
Yeah.
Since you're involved?
Yeah, since you're at the meetings already.
And that completes the list.
Charlie? Great, okay. Um, just to note, there was a newspaper article a few days ago about Steve Brockton and the Aquaria desalization plant. They've been, the city's been taking actions not to pay Aquaria, basically to try and not need or pay for any water that be coming from there. Which would then obviously put a greater burden on their use of Silver Lake, which then increases the chances they'll have to divert from on pots of pond from time to time. There's no action to take, it's just that, given, I think there was some hope, probably some parties that Aquaria would be used more often by the city after all that, but.
The town of Hingham now owns that, right? Is it Hingham that bought it, or Situate, or?
I thought it was Situate.
Or both of them?
I'd have to find that.
Yeah, yeah, some, a town purchased them. Just a side note, of course, with the untimely passing of Mayor Carpenter, he was our, at least, we didn't always get what we were looking for, but he would at least listen to us.
He had it in his ear.
So that whole dynamic is about to change, it's gonna be.
Right, twice, we have the temporary mayor, not temporary, but interim mayor.
Right.
Right now, and then the election, I believe, I think they have elections this summer.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a lot of candidates for mayor in Brockton, so it'll be interesting to see how that shakes out.
Uh, let's see, Visiting Nurse Association, this is, we, the council and council for the GNA from Cape Cod, we were able to reach agreement on the language. And this would be a contract signed by all three members, the board so approves, and there were two copies.
Is there a motion? Moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, just to update one, Waste Management, I'm still working with Larry and the representative from Waste Management on that contract. We're pretty much done. I talked to Steve Hayward earlier this week, he wants some change in the total list, mostly because just, it's outdated in the sense of where the totals actually are. So we've got, that'll be included in the update. Old Colony Communications Center, we had some good news, we have the annual assessment, a hundred and fifty thousand, but it was offset by a transition grant of twenty-six thousand, two thirty-two. So we still have other fees to pay for IT services that are not covered by the center, so we'll still need the twenty-six in the line item. But, um, we had run into a problem last year where we had paid the hundred and fifty and then there were IT services above that and we had to go to town meeting and get a transfer for that. We won't have to do that this time. No action needed by the board. Um, the board's in receipt of, from the planning board, of a revised proposed site plan for Amanda's Estates. Um, there's a public hearing that's gonna be held on September fifth. Um, the planning boards asked the, the various boards and departments that had copy, received copies of this, um, to send comments in by the September fifth hearing date, were any questions or concerns? I didn't know if the board wanted to take any action concerning this.
Um, is, is the planning board having any advice from anybody, or are we?
Well, they're accepting advice.
No, 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 I mean in terms of council.
I don't know, I can check with them and see whether, or you may want to advise, um, land use council that this is before them and, um, ask that.
Well, this could potentially be expensive for the town, I think it's a wise move.
So town council.
Yep.
I recuse myself for this.
Um, next thing, John Peck and earth removal, we did get a letter from John, oh, not from John, from Country Enterprises, Inc. Joe, uh, Peck had dropped this off earlier this week, this was the firm that actually removed the soil. They recorded twelve hundred and sixty-two cubic yards of soil from the four hundred and fifteen street, Thompson Street address between May and September of eighteen. Um, John had also called me, um, last week about some family concerns he's having to deal with. Um, but Joe had, I also had, had sent a copy of the letter, the board had asked me to send to Joe, and that was the response we got. So I'm not sure what the board would like to do at this point.
We sent a certified letter, uh?
Right, so we got, this was basically response, so John received the certified letter, um, Joe received a regular first class letter, we got this back. Joe brought this over from Country Enterprises, Inc.
So does this meet all the requirements that we were asking him for?
Well, we want at least initially to get an amount. Normally, we've, you know, we've been talking about getting this earth removal permit and, you know, obviously, Mr. Peck could send that in, ask for waivers for various things. Um, but.
Yeah.
At this point, well, at least as a starting point, we have a letter from Country Enterprises. It goes over the thousand cubic yards when you need a permit, so, and all the larger, the next step is to contact Mr. Peck saying, we receive this. We need, even though it's, you know, obviously now a year old, we need to go through the process of getting a, um, earth removal permit for the property. Um, he has the option, obviously, of requesting various waivers to do this, but we need an application or the board could take some other action on this.
I'd like to see the letter sent, Tom, with that information provided, and so we can follow up, and as much as now we get a little action going, so we can continue that.
Yeah, I, I was just curious if whoever hauled had any, not that they couldn't generate them, but, um, any slips, or?
All I got was the one-page letter, I can ask if they have any more documentation beyond that.
I just, I'm guessing eighteen yards of load. Unless they overload.
So what would like, the board like to do here? I know Troy mentioned, I don't know if these, considering that to be a motion and somebody wants to second it, or the board takes some other action.
No, it's not a motion, it's just voicing my opinion.
Be about sixty loads, about sixty-nine, seventy loads. I, I, I wasn't a count truck, so I have no idea.
What would you like to do from this point on?
Uh, I, I think it would be at least to, to have it on the record, uh, if he has any, if there are any documented slips or anything from the hall, or, I mean, I, it was probably not a very official job. So that, you know, they may have not generated load slips, but.
Well, all we have at this point is the, the word of the contractor that in fact he moved twelve hundred and sixty-two cubic feet.
Yeah, yeah.
We got, we don't have any.
I mean, that's all we've got to go on, I mean, like, again, who else was there counting them, I wasn't. But he did go over the thousand yards, so we should at least make him go through the motions of filing for the difference. And we don't charge much per yard, it isn't a big fee. What is it, twenty-five cents or something?
So what would you like to do, Gordon?
Uh, I think he should go through the permitting process.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll follow up with both, I'll make sure that both John and Joe know about that. Both the pieces of information, if there's any more documentation, I'll send a note also to Country Enterprises about any other documentation, but I'll send to John, you're requesting if they file a site plan, I know site plan, but, um, application for the, for. Okay, that, um, the Davis Automotive will wait until seven fifty-five for, uh, planning board zoning bylaw hearing, uh, for a public hearing. So the planning board will hold a public hearing on September nineteenth at seven P.M. on six articles that the selectmen submitted and six additional ones from the planning board. Copies of all the twelve articles in your folders. Um, I recommend that even if the board members plan on attending the hearing, that the board leaves some time, two weeks from now, for the meeting on September tenth.
You skipped over one here.
I know, well, the rug application here for Davis is scheduled for seven fifty-five.
Okay.
So we'll get back to that at that time. Um, so, I recommend that even if the board's planning attending the hearing, the board leaves some time and it's meeting on September tenth, review the articles and submit any questions, comments, or recommendations to be entered into the record at the meeting. So that's where that sits. And we'll get to a special town meeting date a little bit later tonight. Which was, was waiting for the setting of the public hearing date for the, um, planning board. Um, I did notify the two petitioners of the marijuana, the different marijuana articles of the hearing dates, so, um, at least, I mean, we'll do more publicity, obviously, but I wanted to reach out to them directly. Uh, NIPs deposit, um, Senator Brady's aide wrote back to say that they've seen the same pile of NIPS litter in other communities and the legislation that's been proposed that would set up a five-cent deposit might be helpful. Um, so he said he would be talking with Senator about that. Um, I did check, Representative Lenatry is a co-sponsor of the five-cent deposit bill, so. Uh, right now, it's still in committee, it hasn't moved at all since January, but, you know, the legislature still has a bunch of months to get worked on. See how many things end up happening in December.
So if his office say that he would co-sponsor the legislation?
No, he didn't, and the aide did not specifically say that he'd support or co-sponsor it, but at least it's encouraging that they're acknowledging there's a problem.
He also mentioned that there's a problem in other communities, that's why, that's why they're feeling very strongly about it at this point in time, that it may help, but if someone's gonna throw something out the window, no matter what, they don't care about the deposit.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
But at least it might be picked up afterwards.
Well, at least somebody can benefit from it, right?
Um, Rich Galart sent back a note, um, in regards to viewership for Area Fifty-Eight. They don't have records for the actual cable channels, the only thing they've got is the YouTube information. Um, he, he did say that when they don't get them up on the channels properly, people start calling saying, hey, where's the meeting? So at least, he says, somebody at least is watching.
Is that two people, or three?
Hey, hey, I, I watch it.
No, they call sometimes.
I want to see what I said.
You know, that's all the reason not to watch it.
On the Complete Streets program, uh, Steve Hayward's working with, um, his engineering firm, um, to get this done in Halifax time. It indicated interest in serving on Complete Streets program. Uh, my recommendation is the board broaden the traffic safety committee's jurisdiction to cover this. I, in the point of, you know, not having another committee with another name, um, since it's likely anybody would be serving on the, this committee would also be serving.
Well, they would be knowledgeable, more knowledgeable than anybody else, so I'm gonna have to play catch-up.
So I'm gonna contact the police chief, um, and try to get a date and time set up for the traffic safety committee.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I did provide a updated, or at least an updated draft for the town aid board, so, um, we've received a copy of the one for Norwell, so what we did was incorporate some of it into this. Um, provides a little bit more information, sort of a proceed, some check-off procedures, um, and I don't know if the board wants to approve this tonight, I can certainly bring it back to the board on the tenth.
I'm dealing with having an opportunity to look at it.
It's not an emergency, we wait till the tenth, though.
It's fine, we can bring it back.
Um, unregistered vehicle, twenty-seven Hillside Avenue, board dealt with this property a year and a half ago, had to go to court to rectify the problem, and it did, got the vehicle out there. Unfortunately, the property owner, for whatever reason, has decided to place another unregistered vehicle at the same spot. Um, I've sent a certified letter to the property owner, who's received it because I have the green card back. I had warned that the town would start daily fines tomorrow, meaning Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, and I visit the property this afternoon and the vehicle is still there. Um, so I'm requesting authorization, begin loving daily fines for up to ten days and then send the parking ticket, meaning the non-criminal disposition, um, and see what happens. Um, I've already contacted County Council since he's familiar with the matters, since he represents the town.
Have we contacted this individual at all, concerned this new vehicle?
I sent him a certified letter, yes.
And no response?
No response, other than I know he received it since the, the green card came back.
Then I would move that we send, send the letter and start filing.
Can you just give a little background on what happened the last time around?
Right, so, so we ended up, you know, we had an unregistered vehicle on the property, it wasn't behind the house and such. Um, we sent several letters, didn't get anything done, we started the filing process, and then, and that allows, if we send, do that, so it's, I don't know if it's twenty-five dollars a day or something like that. So we send, in essence, a parking ticket after ten days, saying you've accumulated these fines, because they don't, they're based, that person has the right to appeal in court. That person did, and the court said, uh, no, and the person removed the car. And now, a year and a half later, we're back with the same.
Same person?
Yes.
Different car?
Right. And the excuse he's been using, I don't know if he's gonna do it at the same time, was he, um, drives in demolition derbies, and that this vehicle would be used for that. I don't know if it's the same, would be the same excuse now, but, um, I went by there, the inspection sticker seems to be about nine years old, so like, and the car windows and such are open, so.
Open or open?
I don't know about out, but there's, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
So my guess is he may very well be doing the same thing over again.
All right, it's seven forty, forty-five, and we have a.
Did you finish?
Yeah, yeah, he, and I, you made a motion, anyone who wants to second that, uh, to the fines?
Do you want to second it? I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just had another question, so if he put up a fence, like we told Mr. Harrison to do, would that subside the issue there?
It could, yeah, but I doubt that he's gonna want to put up a fence, because he has other vehicles that are registered that he wants to have.
Parking there, yeah.
And what he had, what, the vehicle needs to be pushed back sufficiently.
In covered, right?
Yeah, well, it, it, it needs to be pushed back behind the house, and he has it right now, right now, he has it right on the street itself, I mean, it's like three feet away from the edge of the road.
So all he has to do, to your point, is put it behind the house, because that's how the bylaw reads.
Yeah.
I'd say that amaze.
I'm going to recuse myself, seeing as I'm still serving on the.
Board of assessors, I'm gonna sit with them.
You know, that's a, that's a firing squad.
Now you got chocolate, it'd be fun.
This is a better view, I think I like it better than that.
So Holly, just. Holly.
Holly give it them, Holly take it.
Just in case, whether it's our TV audience or the folks here, just in thirty seconds, what are we doing?
We're having a classification hearing, and, um, Holly Marion, Principal Assessor, in Fraser in town Halifax. And we're going to vote with us early today, I met, and we're recommending a factor of one, meaning we're not gonna have a split rate, we'd have one tax rate, residential, commercial, and industrial personal properties, all the same rate. There's only ten percent of commercial, industrial, personal property in Halifax, it's actually less than ten percent, so it's not recommended in this town at all. So that's what we're here for. We are also here to recommend that we not adopt a following, an open space discount. It's just for land that's not developed, it's not including chaplain land, um, the towns are not protected by leans, and there's no penalty for change of use, it's just not recommended in Halifax.
And we don't in fact have any open space.
We don't have any, we don't have any space anyway. Uh, we're voting to not adopt the residential exemption. This is the cities and towns that have rental properties and second homes, the high population of second homes. Halifax doesn't, we live here, so we're not recommending that also. And then a small commercial exemption, we've already adopted a personal property exemption of three thousand dollars or less. So this is just for the property owner, he receives the exemption, it's not passed, the discount is not passed to the business owner, so we don't recommend that either. So to conclude, I would like the board of assessors, I mean, the board of selectmen, to vote on these things.
Gordon, any questions?
Is there a specific motion we need to make?
Yes, we do.
The motion to, um, recommend that it's one tax rate, commercial, personal property, residential, and industrial all at the same rate.
What she said.
I would make that motion.
A factor of one.
Uh, recommend a factor of one, having residential, commercial, industrial properties taxed at the same rate.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And we also, I would move that we also not allow open space discount, residential exemption, and small commercial exemptions within the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the board of assessors just wants to inform the board of selectmen, that excess lending capacity for the current year is four hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents.
Just to clarify, that's what we're not taxing, that we could tax.
Anything further?
No, I just wanna thank Sandy Nolan, Pam Ducey, and Barbara Gann for their help on the recap issue.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you.
So when would tax bills go out at this point? Or what?
I really didn't wanna ask that question.
The question is tomorrow, I need you two in my office to sign into my computer at the gateway, which is secure, to Department of Revenue site, to give you signatures, and we can have passwords made up for you from the clerk. So we need to submit that. The tax rate will be approved probably either tomorrow afternoon or, it's tomorrow afternoon, Wednesday, Thursday, possibly Thursday. The bills will be loaded into our software, and the bills will go out for October 1st and then November 1st.
Yeah, I think.
I could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oak Street speed limit signs. I had a request from Stephen McAllen of 69 Oak Street for 35 mile an hour speed limit signs for the portion of Oak Street that sees the Palms Street. I went back and checked our records, that area is actually designated as thickly settled, so the correct speed limit should be 30 miles per hour. I did go out there and confirm, we do have the thickly settled signs out there, both because you head east towards Plimpton, so just if you make a right-hand turn at the intersection of both the Palms and turning east, you'll see that thickly settled sign. If you're coming from the Plimpton line, you'll see the thickly settled sign when you're going west. What I'm recommending, and in fact, this came up back in 18, probably just, we need to reiterate to the highway surveyor that the board would like to see the hybrid signs. We use those.
Split sign, one said thickly settled 30 miles an hour.
Right. So that we would keep it at 30, not raise it in a sense to 35 miles an hour.
What do we need to do at this time?
Just a motion from the board to direct, or work, or ask the highway surveyor to put those sign, the hybrid signs up. So it's both says thickly settled and 30 miles per hour sighting and.
Is this the only street that we will be placing these on, or are there other streets?
No, you have other streets right now.
They all be placed on?
Well, the only request right now is this, you have this hybrid signs, I know.
Can we be proactive and ask him to place on all those streets that are thickly settled 30 miles an hour signs, split sign too?
You could, sure.
Board?
I'm not sure where we don't have them, but.
Well, the only place I know we have hybrid is Walnut. I'm not sure if.
No, there's another one, I'm trying to remember, Franklin Street, maybe?
Maybe.
Yeah. 'Cause the deal is, we can do that, but we can't do other things without traffic studies, right?
Right. That's right. You could actually bring it down to 25 and a thickly settled.
But we'd have to measure.
You couldn't put up a pure 25 mile an hour, you wouldn't need to do the speed study. If it's thickly settled, you don't need the speed study.
But thickly settled requires houses within 200 feet of each other, is that what it is?
Yeah, there's a certain density.
Yeah.
Yeah, with people that are speeding, you're not reading signs in the first place.
Joy, could I suggest that we make a motion to place the hybrid signs on Oak Street, and when the highway surveyor is replacing signs around town, that he starts to use those in the areas that have the thickly settled signs?
I'm just trying to be proactive, because I know as soon as we put it up on one street, there'll be requests to put it on other streets. So we could start with Oak Street, and then go from there.
Yeah, I'd kinda like to take it on a street-by-street kinda thing.
Okay. Mr. Motion?
I would make a motion that we ask the highway surveyor to place the hybrid, thickly settled 30 mile an hour zone on Oak Street, and start to replace those others.
No, no shaky hand.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
All right.
Signature authority, some more forms to sign. Bob Burksford will be in in a couple weeks to talk with the board about the fall edition of Mudfest that's scheduled for Sunday, November 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. You do have a copy in your folders of his entertainment license from June, so you can see what probably a similar license would look for, look like for November. Pam's already reached out to the Public Safety and Public Health Departments for comments, so we'll have those available for the meeting on September 10th, too. See, in a letter from the town clerk, she's asking if the board would support a letter being sent to the Secretary of State, or Secretary of the Commonwealth. These are statute that requires that various law books, not the ones in back here, but different set of law books, which are the, one usually per year of the acts and resolves, meaning the legislation approved by the state legislation, the other are the court reporters for the Massachusetts Appeals Court and Supreme Judicial Court. She ends up having them on her shelves there, which never get open, and what she'd like to do is get more space and not have to continue to collect these. She's, she is asking if the board would support having a letter to Secretary Galvin be sent, asking that they no longer send those books to her.
If they don't send the books, how does she stay up to the date on what the?
Everything's online.
And if the line goes down, I'm, I'm just in favor of having hard copies of stuff, but it's a board decision. I'm fine with one.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, it works, and it is a space saver. I find myself doing it all the time now, even specific code books where they're available rather than having it hanging around.
So what motion is?
To support the town clerk's letter to the Secretary of State.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two copies of the contract with Clean Harbors Environmental Services for the Hazel Hazes Waste Collection Day scheduled for November 9th. In this case, this would be signed off by just the chair. The board would approve having the chair sign on behalf of the board.
Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to allow you to sign the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've already talked about the cemetery lawn mower, live entertainment permit for salon serenity.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
This is the annual cuts for a type one diabetes cure that they hold every fall. This one will be on September 21st from 1:00 to 4:00. They'll be having a DJ there. We've run this event for a number of years without any problems, so I'm asking for the board to approve use to the live entertainment permit for this event.
I'll move we grant the permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Historical society plant sale, the society would like permission to use the town hall green on Saturday, September 14th from 9:00 to noon for the annual plant sale. The Generations Group is also having its dogs shown, but in past years, we've had simultaneous events without any problems. They'll be, the dog show's planning on using the main part of the green, and the plant sale's been held over here by the steps. Pam can contact Generations and confirm the logistics with both groups, but otherwise, I would ask the board approve the permit to, for this plant sale from the society on the town hall green for the 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have official forms from the Massachusetts School Building Authority to confirm the finances for the combined roof and doors, windows siding projects. These are based on the actual bids that came in, along with the associated costs for the project manager and the architect, along with the contingency. Basically, it's an update now that, I know it sounds a little weird, since everything is already accorded on these, but that's their timing, is that they brought these in now. These have nothing to do with the fire suppression system project, because MSBA had nothing to do with the fire suppression system project. In this case, the two copies would be signed by the chair. In this case, also, I'll get Joy's signatures, and also the chair for the school committee, and then I get to sign, I guess as chair of the school building committee. But if the board would approve having the chair sign these on behalf of the board.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
7:55, just on the revocation hearing for Davis Automotive. Davis Automotive brought in a check of $1,600 as a down payment to what they owe for their motor vehicle excise back taxes. I'm asking for the board.
In this case, you?
Yeah. In this case, what this would, what I would recommend, you know, sorry, sorry. So what I'm asking the board is two things, to rescind its revocation of the fuel storage license and the class two license, but also to continue the hearing two months from now into October, so the board can review the situation at that time. And, but with a letter stating that they need to continue to make similar payments each month to stay in good standing, then also they'll have to stay in good standing with the rest of their taxes. They're up to date on everything else, as far as I know, but for the real estate, but the real estate will come due again, obviously, November 1st. November 1st won't be two months from now, but at least we'll give them a heads up that the board's expectation is while we're all paying this, they need to keep up to date with the property taxes.
It's a motion to revoke?
The motion was, you already have revoked, you already revoked the licenses, I'm asking the board to rescind the revocations.
I would make that motion to rescind the revocation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then what I'll say is that we'll continue the hearing on October 22nd at 7:45, and I'll notify Davis of this. I've got a minute and a half on my watch, so I'll try and get through a couple more things. Just on the solar project and filling the landfill over at the Bridgewater Halifax line, work continues on the project. McDonald Industries had met with Kathy Dryden and myself a few days ago, and we were told that sometime later this year, they'll start the application for the permitting for bringing in soils that have contaminant levels that are higher than what's being brought in now. Those higher contaminant levels do require public hearings and permitting and such, both from, I believe, at least from DEP, if not the town, but the town plays a role in that process.
What was approved last time with them?
There's nothing approved by the town.
Nothing approved.
There's certain contaminant levels for bringing in soils to a landfill, and what the level that they're bringing in now doesn't require any permitting from the town. The higher level would, as part of some sort, in essence, a site agreement, but we're not there yet. What they're probably doing in the next couple of months is start that process with the town.
What we did was a site visit to take a look at what's existing there now, and what their proposal was going to be. The state's kinda pushing for this, because they don't have anywhere to put this material. So we weren't all that keen about it necessarily, and we didn't, there's still a lot of questions as to exactly the materials, but does the groundwater, what studies have been done?
And the history of that landfill is that one of the reasons that it's closed is because they were bringing hazardous materials in without permission, and the town wanted to close it, have it closed down, so just to let you know, that's been an ongoing issue with that particular landfill for a while.
Because they've been bringing fill in now, probably for several years, but with their, as Tom mentioned, DEP's very interested in having a site to bring in higher, a level, fill that has higher level of contaminants, that's one, then they wanna do sort of what they see as a win-win, just as we talked about our landfill here, the solar is a much larger solar field. On the combined, both, we put both landfills, one that never actually got done, but the one over on the Halifax side that did, and the one on the Bridgewater side, they're raising their levels, although in essence, you have a flat plain at a much higher elevation above the tree line, that would be perfect, at least they think, for a solar field.
And just for clarity, BFI, or whoever bought BFI, owns the Halifax portion of the fill. McDonald owns the Bridgewater side, they're kinda working in tandem to fill the middle. So it's, it's a little convoluted.
Bridge the gap.
So basically, there's a V between the two properties?
Yeah, swale, very, very large scale swale.
Yeah.
And that was required back before.
Well, there was two separate facilities.
Two separate facilities, two landfills.
Basically, if you think of where the town line was, they had to stay a certain way, space away from the town line, because anything else, then you start spilling over the other side of the line, so the, both projects couldn't be within a certain distance away from that line.
And anybody who's looked at it recently, and most people don't anymore, you can see how much it's come down, so they're trying to take advantage of it.
Settling, the BFI land will settle.
Yeah, they're trying to take advantage of that, and where the state's kind of pushing a little bit, and giving them some incentives to put in this higher level of contamination. Obviously, it's a moneymaker somewhere.
My basic question would be, what kind of contaminants they putting in there?
Yeah, well.
And how much they're gonna put in?
And that's why we have the public hearing and permitting process, so that it's not, unlike this level that they're bringing in now, it's a much higher level, the town has to be more involved in the permitting process.
So the last go-around, it was just more like a public information for the?
Yes.
The board.
Yeah, meet and greet kinda thing.
So everybody, I think most people are here tonight, this is, we're hitting our eight o'clock appointment.
Why is everybody here anyway tonight?
Quite the crowd.
There's nothing on TV?
There's no hors d'oeuvres, there's no drinks being served.
We have members from the Council on Aging here, we have members from Municipal School Building Committee, I'm sure Generations is here, I'm sure a number of interested residents are here. The idea was that during the last several years, we've looked at various alternatives of what the town could be doing to provide a council on aging facility for our residents. We've done three iterations, one a number of years ago, we've looked at building a new one over on Route 105, land owned by the Housing Authority. Another iteration was to purchase the Seasons Restaurant, that was a few years ago, and then just most recently, we looked at the possibility of doing a renovation expansion of Pope's Tower across the street with Council on Aging. In each case, at various stages, the townspeople made the decision they did not want appropriate additional funding for those projects. So we're left with our current situation, where nothing has happened. And what the board wanted to do was invite, obviously, both the Municipal School Building Committee and Council on Aging, but anybody else who was interested to talk about, but we're starting off, in essence, we're a blank sheet of paper, and saying, everything is back on the table, so that we're not automatically saying, no, we can't do X, Y, or Z. So for instance, I've already been asked about, could we do a regional council on aging of some sort? So we'll be meeting with representatives from, or my colleagues from Carver and from Plimpton some, in early September. It doesn't mean that anybody's picked a site or anything like that, or anybody's worked on any agreements, but we're putting everything on the table, in the sense of not saying no immediately, because we've already said no to everything already in the past, but we're starting over again.
And do we have a spokesperson, John?
No.
Haven't seen John in forever. Hi, John.
Hey, I'm from South Halifax.
Yeah.
I guess we, as Charlie just mentioned, we've done a lot of creative work, and bring in different proposals to, to board townspeople. I've heard rumors about this revitalization, not too sure how it would work, but I guess we're gonna listen to it. I have talked to the architect that did the last plans, and they are still willing to work with us in some way, if we were to go to Pope's Tower, and I don't believe this is using one of their project. If we go on our project, building on our project someplace in Plimpton or Halifax or wherever, it would be to go start out, scratch again, hire a new architect, hire a corporate works, hire, very costly again. So I guess what we're gonna do is listen to the council on aging and see what ideas they want, and run with them, I guess.
Yeah, I've been approached about a regional arrangement, too. The natural would be Plimpton because of our proximity. I don't know how Carver would fit in, especially South Carver, because at some point, everyone, you know, depending on where it's located, someone's gonna be complaining they have to go too far. I mean, I just see that as a natural kinda thing, but certainly, we gotta listen and see if anything positive can develop from that, but.
Well, I would say that someone that's talked about region a little bit, might tell us a little bit about pain discovery, is anybody?
If I could interject, I was talking with Selectman Ryan Clark from Carver and Mark Russo from Plimpton, and the subject came up on council on aging, and I was telling them how we've been struggling, you know, to make different projects work, and look for land and so forth, and just really didn't seem to be working out. And right away, the Ryan Clark perked up, he said, you know, we're in the same predicament. He said, so what we're using now is this old house that's down in South Carver, and it basically is mined by a half a dozen women that think they're the council on aging, when, I don't remember the number, let's just say there's 9,000 people in town that are looking to use for the council on aging, but these were. the council on aging, but these women have a stronghold on it. So they're trying to bust that, but they haven't been able to do it. They weren't able to do it on their own. And from what I understand, Plinton has got nowhere. They'd like to get something off the ground for their seniors there also. So I said to them, what would be the chances that we might be able to collaborate, that we might be able to regionalize? And they said, I don't know, it's a thought. So it's something that we thought we'd look into. And Ron Clark said that he was gonna put his town administrator in charge of looking into, getting in touch with Plinton and Halifax. I believe the TA from Carver got in touch with Charlie. In the meantime, Mark had mentioned that there's a piece of property in Plinton, right behind the fires, the police station that they put up, the five acres of property that the town owns. So we're wondering if that would be a possibility of looking into. I realized if this property was available was down in the other end of Weaham, down near the Carver line, that Halifax probably wouldn't be interested in it. As much as Carver wouldn't be interested, if we found a piece of property up on the Hanson and Halifax border, down off the Elm Street someplace, I could see that. Ideally, would be Plinton because they're centrally located. But what I was hoping for is that we could at least put together a committee to investigate and work with Plinton and Carver to regionalize it, put up one building, have the three council on agents work out of it, we might be able to combine the outreach program, the nursing program, programs we have and programs that they have, and get more involvement in it. All I'd be asking for would be to get your approval or permission to put together a committee to investigate it. Carver has already told me that their selectmen are on board, and Plinton has told me that their selectmen are on board, to look into this and do a study and see what land is available. Now, I understand, just a few minutes ago, we talked about there's no open space in Halifax.
Well, that was in terms of the Sessors.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
But we don't have a lot of land, I can see, in Halifax. Of course, it could be right in front of me and I don't realize it. But we've kicked the can down the road, we've looked in a lot of different areas, and we've tried a lot of different things, and we've still come up empty-handed. So we're kind of hoping that regionalization might be the answer. Charlie, did you say that there were some?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you all walked in during the introduction. Yes, I'm, I'm meeting with my colleagues in fact, next week.
Okay. But you said that there were some regional, regionalized council on agents of the western part of the?
There might be, I haven't checked, but I can find out.
It's been done.
Yeah.
And this is just a possibility. I know there's a lot of possibilities that might be on the table that we've gone through before. I know this is open to everybody, but this, this was my thought in working with Plinton and Carver. The Area fifty-eight, it seemed to work out pretty well for the three towns. It was relatively simple to do in comparison to maybe regionalize the council on aging, but I don't think it's a hurdle we couldn't get over.
Well, it's certainly worth going down that road and investigating. I mean, there's nothing to lose there. It has potential, and we've got nothing else on the table right now either, so, you know, we'd be remiss not to look at it.
I think, I think that's a great idea. I had another idea before you came up with the regionalized idea. I switched, I said switch to his, but just as an option, I want to give another, another idea. The water department is spread up between two buildings. All their trucks and equipment are down at the town bar, and their office is at the water department building. Building maintenance works out that same little building. If we were to knock down that building and put a combined police and fire station on that site, we'd have to move a lot line. I guess it's fairly simple format to move a lot line. We have enough distance from, I believe we do, from the septic field, the leach field, from the school and library, to go in that direction into that, that little ravine that's there. If we built a combined police and fire there, we'd have now an empty police station and an empty fire station. Building maintenance and water could be completely together in the fire station. Our equipment that's now outside behind the water department, unprotected, would be locked up tight. Sorry, water department would all be one spot, as opposed to being split up. So then, the council on aging could go to the existing police station, has an ADA elevator, has a kitchen, it would need some renovation. It has, it has two garage bays for their vans, and there's some room to expand parking, get the dirt off there. It, it's gonna be one of the more costly, you know, the costlier option of the two, but there's more grants out there for police and fire than there is for a council on aging. And we know that our fire chief is very good at getting grants, so I kind of stranglehold him into it. But it doesn't give council on aging really exactly what they're looking for. The building needs some work, but the buildings, they need some work anyway, the siding needs to be replaced. It doesn't give them a single floor option, which is a big thing on their list. But it's, the building is underused right now with nine-one-one not being there. The building is largely unused upstairs, so it just seems like a waste. So, it's just.
One other thing, if I could just throw out, is that Ron mentioned that we could really, instead of calling it the council on aging, it could be a community center. It's where the council on aging would operate out of. But he was, I wouldn't say dreaming big, but just thinking, you know, outside the box, that perhaps this could be a function facility, whereas if it's not used on weekends, could rent it out for weddings, and it could have, look at a lifter license and serve alcohol, which that would be, you know, actually good in life. And.
That sounds interesting.
The Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts could use, use it for meetings. We might be able to have a facilities manager, somebody that would be in charge of it, to schedule things and make sure that it was cleaned properly, that it was prepared for functions that go on, as well as during the week, whenever the council on aging is operating out of there, with their nurse program, their, the diet waitress, a room set up for Cods, for Cod playing, as well as having a great big hall for dining and so forth. Another thing that I happened to think of that might be of interest, that we could have a movie night, invite the three towns for a dollar, come in and watch a movie, have a screen set up, and invite the children and the families to get together with the three towns on Wednesday nights. Three dollars for a family to come in and watch a movie.
Where is this from?
Who knows? I, I do some quick sketches, and I'm not an architect by any means, but I think it would be relatively simple to do, because I'm not sure about the square footage and whatnot. Charlie seems to think that five acres of property would be large enough to be able to do this.
Of course it is, whether that, that property is buildable.
It's all, it's all planned, it's all pretty good stuff.
We could have an outside pavilion, so that there could be outside functions, they have a garden area, that the seniors could put a garden in, the Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts could put gardens in and grow fruits and vegetables and so forth during the summer season. I know it sounds like a lot, and it seems kind of, where do we start? But I'm just asking you to allow us to form a committee to work with Plinton and Carver to see what we could come up with.
Charlie, do you think that we would be more eligible for a community, community compact grant that would help us with our regionalization? We had done it for the fire, that didn't work out?
Well, yeah, I mean, there, there could be compact grants probably would be good for the planning purposes, where there might be other grants, like community development block grants, where you get additional points for doing regional projects, so.
So we may get more money.
Right.
For regionalization.
Right, when we did the rehab housing program, we got points for having both Carver and Halifax participate in that, that helped our grant application. So that if we were to look, whether it's that program or other programs, that there might be state funding, for that matter earmarks in the budget, if you've got now two or three representatives and senators from the communities that would be participating, you now have more than just, you know, one representative that's looking, let's say, for a hundred thousand dollars for a town. You've got representatives from three communities looking for several hundred thousand dollars for earmarks. So even though that's not officially a regionalization program, having support from your legislative delegation for additional funding from more than one town would be a plus.
The, does anyone else have any thoughts on what we might do to, to ring about Joseph question? I see a hand, I don't see the body.
Right now, we're talking about long-term. We also gotta talk about short-term. It's, it's getting to the point where some of us cannot get to the upper floor because of the stairs and all. We know that if you want to renovate over there, which isn't going to happen, but if you did, you'd have to do the whole, the whole building to make a handicap accessible, you can't just do one section at a time. Also, when I was talking with some of the state reps and some of the other towns, we don't have any more businesses coming into town that I know of right now, like Walmart. But they said that when businesses like that were coming into their town, they would talk with that business and have them do something on a second floor, or buy another building for the seniors to see. So something like that, I might be able to be looked at, too. If we have any big companies coming in, it can help us out. But I think we gotta talk also about, right now.
He talked, he talked to me one month ago, and I kind of forgot all about it, to tell you the truth. They have a painting class, and four or five of the people that are in the painting class can't get up the stairs to do it anymore. And he thought about the room downstairs in the museum. I mean, years ago, we, we used to be there on a regular basis, it was a meeting for, for the town. So I talked to Sue and, and myself, and we're going to clean that room out completely, fix it up, the bathrooms and maintenance, the bathrooms are there, the seat there, and whatever is stored down there will be better stored in the second floor of the product store anyways, because it's drier. And the painting class of the seniors will be able to have a walk-in room, and it'll be all theirs, they can leave their paintings all there, so that class can be started up again, hopefully, to the ten or twelve that they had doing. So, that's a little bit far now. We've kind of, we've kind of given it to the seniors a bad, bad deal for the past twelve years, fifteen years.
Twenty-two or more.
And I think it's about time that the town and all the committees work together. I think that's a lot of things that didn't happen on a lot of these projects, that the whole town committees were working in the same direction. Like years ago, when we, we build a building, build a town hall, add insurance here, everybody worked in the same areas, and we haven't had that in the last five or six years. So I'm hoping that with that community atmosphere, let's get something done for the seniors, that every committee, the accounting, the selector, and the town clerk, the collector, everybody in the town gets on the same deal and notifies when we go to ask for money, two or three million dollars, and partly four million dollars for the bill that he's looking for, by the way with three towns, maybe. But we go to town meeting, we tell them in advance, in an article, we are looking for four million dollars. Not go to a town meeting and have a blank figure there, and come up on the floor saying, we're looking for four million dollars. And that's what's happened in the last few things. That figure has not been put in front of the town until town meeting night. And not only that, the committees within the town, five minutes before town meeting, is telling us how they want to fund it, completely different, in the back room. This is not the way it should be done.
Well, in all due respect, John, I mean, these numbers kept changing all the time. Every, every time the architect came back, it was a different number. So, I mean, it wasn't like anybody was forewarned with any of this.
But we shouldn't have put it on town meeting, tell me how to fund it.
Well, you either go to town meeting or you don't, or you wait till the next one.
That's right. But we lost, every time it went up, we lost.
And, and this is why, this is why, and people can take me wrong if they want, but the people that wants this, or need this, haven't come forward to support it. You could say that's not true, but every time we turn around and say, we gotta be there, they don't have time to do it, they don't show up at the meetings, they don't do the things they need to done. If we're gonna do something, we may present one plan, whichever one we decide on with the research, and have the support going for it. I agree with you. All the town committees and everything should know, the finance committee, the planning committee, should know what's going on and support it. But when you stand in town meeting, and I have somebody say, well, we don't need to give it to the seniors, let's build another playground. You know, that, that's, and you don't have anybody respond to it. They sit there quietly. It's, you know, we can speak all day long, I've, I've supported every plan that came down the pike, wholeheartedly. But unless we come together and all agree to it, instead of saying, well, I like his idea better, I like his idea better, therefore I'm not gonna support that one, I'm gonna support this. You're splitting the divide and conquer.
Right. So, well, we just gotta come up with one plan before the town meeting, and advise the people. So they know about it before they get to town meeting. How much is it gonna cost them?
That makes total sense, John, but like, like I said.
You guys should get decided, if these guys want a committee to talk about regionalization, let them do it.
Why wouldn't we?
Yeah, right. So, how do you wanna form that committee?
I just take exception to the fact that it makes it sound like we weren't supporting of those numbers, but those numbers were so fluid, nobody knew what they were until we got to town meeting.
Yeah, it's no different than school.
Well, I understand, but I mean, you know.
But the fact is that we shouldn't have presented them until we had proof. But that's all in the past now. Well, I'm just saying, let's create a new feeling, a new approach to a building, that we're all working on the same direction.
Absolutely agree with that. Everybody should be involved in it. There should be a liaison from all the committees on that committee, so that they know what the numbers are, because that's the only way you're gonna get total support from everybody, or maybe not, but at least if everybody's engaged in it, you've got a better shot at it. I, I totally agree with that. I think it should be a broader committee involved in the whole thing.
And, and I think the idea of it being, and I understand what Dick was talking about, being a community building, and I think that's the one issue that didn't get across, didn't go across with people, because they kept saying, senior citizen, senior citizen. It's a community center, because there's help for anyone who walks in that building, whether they be twenty years old, fifteen years old, whatever, eighty years old, but people don't know that. I talk to people, and they've never even been in the building. I think I spend too much time there, but anyway. But, but the, but the fact is, when you hear people, and I'm telling you what I hear at my other office, Walmart. When a woman comes up to me and says to me, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna vote for you anymore because you're for the seniors and we need to produce stuff for our kids, and everything. My answer to her was, first of all, did you come to town meeting? No. Did you, did you write me? Did you just fax me? No. How many kids do you have? I have three kids. Well, out of those three, you're paying for one half of one to go to school. Because if you're not getting twelve thousand dollars a year, paying twelve thousand dollars a year in taxes, you're not paying for a full kid to go to school, because that's what it costs for one kid to go. The reason that we want to support the seniors is that the reason you came to town was because you liked the quality of life, you liked what was going on, you liked the school system, otherwise you wouldn't have moved here. You like the coast of the home. Guess who made it that way? The seniors. And many of them didn't have kids. And many of them didn't have kids in school. Many of them passed by laws, and the laws that made the town what it is today, you need to support them. I get it all the time. I'm the reason the taxes are high. I have that kind of control.
He is. He is emotional. Is that emotional? That's emotional.
No, no, I get very, you have to forgive me, I don't get emotional very often, but I do when it comes to this subject, because we need to have a good front. Everybody on the same page. Not somebody saying, well, I don't like so-and-so because I don't like them, I'm not gonna follow their idea, or so-and-so, or something like that. It's gotta be a good front, no matter what idea we come up with, no matter what idea we decide to go forward with, it's gotta be a unified front. And Brendan, I'm sorry, you had something to say?
Well, I wanna thank everybody for all the work they've put in to the ideas. I wanna also advocate, as an outreach worker, and right now, my position for the seniors that have sacrificed, you know, they're not able to do the programs upstairs, and we do need to find something now for them and not have those programs fall apart. We do already outsource several programs that, you know, that's difficult. A lot of our holiday events, so we all know this, you know, we have to make a change. Is it possible that we could have a committee for the ideas that have been brought here tonight, for the regional idea, for Scott's idea, keeping it here in town? Is that, you know, something we could talk about? You know, to evaluate everything, I think the ideas we've brought tonight are great, but there's a lot that's gotta go into it before we can even probably, you know, take action on any of those.
I have no issues with starting a committee. You know, as long as the committee is gonna perform what they need to do, and don't get into personalities, because unfortunately, we have some committees in town, and I have no problem in saying it, they get into personalities, he, she, and I don't like this person, I don't like that person, therefore, I'm not going that way, and they're not functioning.
Everything will need to be weighed out.
The committee, how many people in the committee would you think we'd need?
From Halifax, I'd like to see probably at least, at least three, possibly five.
Gordon?
The one thing I guess I would bring up is, I wouldn't just limit it to Kingston, I mean, to Plinton and Carver. I think I would talk to the people in Kingston, I would talk to Hanson and East Bridgewater, and just see. I know that they have, but are there ways to work together with them, to branch out? From what we have right now, which isn't working, and I can totally understand that, is there a way that we can work with the other centers now to provide more services for the seniors? And is there a way to work on a long-term project?
That idea would work better, because they have buildings. And if they would take in programs from our town, they wouldn't have to worry about a building. We worry about a building, we'll have it five years out anyways.
I guess I was just.
To build a building, in any one of the three towns.
I guess I was just thinking, is there a way, like the painting program, is there a way that we could use space and have a van be available to take people to that space to put on the program, or work together with them?
Well, some of these things could, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, some programs we could use in the Great Hall, I mean, talk about underutilized, for the most part, on a daily basis, nights sometimes, but.
Now, we have some programs in the police station now.
We do, we have tryouts of the police station.
I mean, it's an empty building.
Yeah, for all intents and purposes.
Yeah. I mean, there's a kitchen up there, there's an elevator to get them up there, and there's a fairly good-sized room up there.
Yeah, yeah, the meeting room, yeah.
John? No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, we do outsource quite a bit. We have two vans, and our, you know, main goal for those are medical appointments. We have over fifteen hundred seniors here in town. Outsourcing to another town, I think, would be hard for all of us. We all wanna stay, you know, here in our community. You know, but something would have to be done, I wouldn't think King going, you know, sending the painting class to Kingston.
What about the library? Don't they have a community room?
Actually, Gene was one of the, you know, first to recommend that, but with that particular class, with the paint class, the fumes and things, with the different paints, you can't, you hope they overlook that. So it has to be a building like.
We'd have to vet the place.
Well, that, that's a real problem, because it's gonna be cleaned out anyways.
Right, right.
Right? And it's big enough for them, it's got a bathroom there, it's got kitchen sinks there, and it's a walk-in down through a back door for the painting class.
How long would it take?
They can leave their stuff set up, they don't have to take it down and put it out.
How long would it take to prepare it, and what's the cost?
We're gonna get it done within the next month, and we'll send the building to the slip.
So that solves one problem.
We'll send it back. It all worked.
There is, it's mostly cleaning, we gotta do some work on the lights. The toilets and stuff haven't been used in years, so the renovations and all, I mean, you're talking a few hundred dollars, and that goes.
What about the heat, or anything down there? Talk about more.
The bill, you know, usage would go up on the electric bill.
Okay, I'm sorry, Olivia?
Somebody already said it, thank you.
Okay. Dick?
I just feel along with what Gordon said, that's not a bad idea, that the committee could at least look into, perhaps, lying into some of the surrounding communities that already has a council on aging. Well, I understand, Bridgewater has a pretty new one, and whatnot, they may have still dead out on it. Is there some way that we could merge with them? At least look into it, and talk to them about, you know, the possibility. And one other thing, when I mentioned to, brought all of this regionalization up, Scott was the one who was saying, when we were talking about a community building, that we could make it an emergency shelter also, that we're gonna be building a building to get the maximum use out of it. If there were a disaster, God forbid, in Halifax, Plinton, or Carver, that we would have a main facility to have an emergency squad for people to go to. Go, backup generator, and, again, just thinking outside the blocks, for some.
What I'd like to have, at least for me, and for the rest of the board, is a list of the activities that are going on, what space is needed, so any committee that's warm, have that information available to them, to sit down and determine what they could do, if they were gonna be looking for space, not just the painting case.
We have, when we went through on the buildings, we have the list of all the committees and all the rooms they need, and all that. It's all available, very easily available, so I guess what you gotta do is form some type of a committee, who you're gonna have on, and work on it. We could discuss this all night long, but it's getting me in my ice cream time.
You're melting? You'll be asleep before you get it, is that what you're saying?
Would it be nice to have the directors from each one of the towns on the committee to be able to coordinate, you know, the programs that they have, well, we offer this in Halifax, and they have that in Carver, and Plinton's always wanted to do this? To at least have the directors, like you said, Troy, to know the needs of what the facility is gonna have to supply.
Well, there's two, at least from my standpoint, the ideas, both ideas are good. One is more expensive than the others, and I'm just sitting here thinking, I'd like your thoughts on combining it. But if they balk at putting two million dollars or three million up, it's gonna cost, what, five, six million dollars to build a combined police station, fire station, with the garage?
Plinton built a police station, it's five thousand square feet, and it was a bargain at three million. But I don't, you know, there's just so many requirements for a new police station, it gets really expensive.
The only thing that that plan has going for it is, it gives three departments room to grow.
Yeah.
You know, so it's kind of a long-term solution for other ones as well.
Somebody from Hanson is going through the same thing with this, I mean, center. They want another one, they don't know whether they wanna build, whether they wanna go into the school, or they wanna demolish the school. So they got all kinds of things going on up there with their senior center. When Kingston opened up, first thing we did, we lost people from Halifax, they went to Kingston. So we had to go away with the bingo. East Bridgewater opened up, they put on the brand-new school, the brand-new fire station, brand-new senior center, and we lost people to East Bridgewater. And so we have been getting smaller, and the people are going to where the new centers are. Hanover opened up, we lost people over there. Now, those three, I don't know about East Bridgewater, but Kingston and Hanover, they didn't expand, because they run out of space again with the brand-new buildings. And every year that we step behind, it's gonna cost more to build just what we wanted ten years ago.
Well, if we were to build a committee, form a committee right now.
Can I throw something into that?
Don't hurt anybody.
I was just thinking, where Charlie's gonna meet with is.
Counterparts.
Counterparts, and the other towns, maybe that would be a good time to explore a committee, the size of a committee, that type of thing, and kind of report back to us, and then we can have this little chat again real soon. I think maybe some feedback from the other towns might be helpful, too, because we don't wanna appoint X amount of people, and they're appointing X amount of people, and now we got forty people on a committee here.
Yeah, there are, there are, there are at least six.
Yeah, well, I said, you won't get anything done.
Excuse me, there are at least six things that need to be discussed, whatever committee goes on. How would the building be administered? Who's gonna be, who's gonna be, who's gonna be in charge? How do we cover any liability insurance? You know, transportation?
Transportation's gonna be a big item, because that, we're gonna be.
The cost of possibly maintaining the building, that's gonna be involved.
How do you share it?
Share it, snow removal. You know, those are some of the things that I've thought of, to look at, but the big part is, who administers it? So do we still have our own director at each town? Use the Pope Tavern as the headquarters to lines running out from there? How do we go about doing that? Those are some of the things that at least in my mind has come across. The charge you would scott would be, what would be the cost of combining a building down there? Meet with the fire chief and the police chief and see what things they need in order to figure, if we were to go with that. And then we come together at some other meeting down the road, and determine which idea is the best one, which one we wanna pursue. So when we go to town hall, when we go to town meeting, it's something that's gonna be unified. Does anything I said sound unreasonable? Dick?
No, it's just, I totally agree with what you just said, but I also wanna add one other thing to it, is what would happen if it were to dissolve? How would we dissolve it if all of a sudden Plinton ran into hundreds of millions of dollars, and they decided, well, we don't want Carver and Halifax as part of our council on aging, or our community center, you guys are up on your own, how do we get out of it? And we went through the same thing with Silver Lake, with.
Yeah, him with the withdrawal.
We formed a unity, and it was working out rather well with the three towns, or four towns, and all of a sudden, we were held back. Well, we would have to build into bylaws and regulations and agreements, and that would involve lawyers and everything, how we would disperse it.
Bert?
Wouldn't we allow anybody else to come in? This was something that we talked about in the cable. All right, we have the three towns in the cable, and there's some other towns that are struggling to maintain that cable, should we invite them in too? So there's a lot of, a lot of questions like you just brought up, Troy, that have to be answered, that the committee would have to come up with answers for.
Bert?
I agree with Mr. Campbell, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves right here tonight. I think what we were here for, you know, originally to see if, at least, we'd contact these other, the other towns that may or may not wanna be involved in such a program. Specifics, like John was saying, we were getting down to transportation and everything, if the other towns don't want anything to do with it, then why waste all our time? Let's, you know, Dick has obviously talked to some people, got some great feedback, some very positive feedback, let's start there first, that's why, before we get ahead of ourselves, you know, with, you know, all the specifics are very important, don't get me wrong, but like.
Yeah, that's down the road.
In order for anybody to agree to anything, they gotta know what they're getting into.
There you go.
Those are the spots. Okay, anything further?
So is it okay to approach these other towns?
My tires unslashed outside, aren't they?
I, me personally, I'd like to see, get a report back from Charlie, after he meets with the other town administrators, and then we can kind of go from there. Because if they're not interested, or their parameters suddenly get really tough or something, so.
Pam, when's our next meeting? So it's two weeks, there's enough time?
And you're meeting with?
Next week.
Next week, so we'll have some time to come back, and we could get some feedback.
And there's something to start with.
Yeah.
Could we expand Charlie's list to some of the other communities, to see if there's any interest?
Well, I think it'll be discussion there, Charlie?
Well, I mean, I could always reach out, I think it's gonna be a different situation than what we're looking with Plinton and Carver, that we're, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's later.
I mean, I think, there's no reason I can't call East Bridgewater, as an example, and say, if we were interested in doing some sort of merge structure, because obviously, our residents, right now, can go to an East Bridgewater program, it's not as if they have to get a passport or something to go there. It's a question of, is there a way of us doing more of a buy-in with them, but I'm not quite sure what that's gonna get us, that doesn't already exist in a sense of if our residents are already going there, or to Kingston, for instance, then, and we're not, right now, putting money in. If we did put money in, what are we getting for putting that money in? That's not happening right now.
Okay. I think we, the horse is not moving, the carriage is sitting still, we can't beat him anymore. I think the ideas that we've come forward with tonight are good. Hopefully, something positive will come out of it, we'll wait for Charlie. Dick, it doesn't stop you from talking to your associates about it. But at any rate, I'd like to thank you all for coming, in your interest. No, I'm sorry, the classroom's closed. Yes.
But do we have permission to use the historic building for this?
I don't know whether, that would be up, that would be up to John and his committee.
Yeah, one also on Susan, Susan is giving me a okay.
Yeah.
So we can help them when?
Yeah.
I don't think you'll want them.
Something about a triangle, something about a triangle between Bridgewater and Halifax. Basement.
We're actually outside.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute break? Oh, there's a hundred of them, right?
Yeah, there's about a hundred, all together, so, a hundred. We probably did about forty-nine last times.
So can I split these into three piles?
I would move, I would move that we accept.
Pen to sign all the.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, I like that.
Brad Graham's resigned from the finance committee, effective immediately, due to commitments.
With regrets? Yes.
Finance committee resignation. We sent a letter, you know, and, thank you for the service, and all that.
So, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You don't want, you don't want these in order, right, Pam?
Yes, I do. Yes, you gotta do a flip fold like that, because then I gotta turn around and give that, oh, you guys, come on.
Customer signature, oh, I'm an idiot. I want my abatement, I signed for it.
It's just the first two.
I'll be so mad.
Okay, well, I'll just sign.
Yes, that's how, yeah, exactly.
You can keep signing the customer's section.
There was the first, so you know what you could do, uh, you see, you can't, since it's how, yeah.
Well, then, definitely, yeah, keep signing them, because they're not gonna get in order here if we don't do it that way.
See, what happens is, um, then I have to flip the page over, that's why, that's we have to sign, so first of all, they're going one way, and I gotta flip them all over for tonight's meeting, and, oh, yeah. So you can-
All right, so tell Michelle Hill that she and I are gonna share that, uh, abatement, okay?
Council request.
Did you do the foreclosure for sixty-five?
Solar.
Yep.
Um, talk to them, uh, Colby Drive, um, yeah, so for Colby Drive, it's just an update, um, on the foreclosure of that property, Attorney Mayor beginning the necessary paperwork, um, to clear the land and the property, but I know the family, members of the family are interested in getting the property redeemed, there's no action needed by the board, but it's a situation that's still fluid at this point. Finance Committee, we did receive a resignation from Brad Graham, um, he resigned from the committee, effective immediately due to commitments to his private work and family, and that leaves four members on the committee, I'll try and get out some sort of press release, um, to try and hope to generate interest. Luckily, this is the slowest part of the year, so the committee's work, um, isn't rigorous right now, but we'd like to get more members on the committee before winter and the bite of season sets in. We did receive a council request from Gordon R. Andrews, um, who's working with Attorney Mayo, he wanted to contact him about forms and being able to continue and postpone meetings, and require in relation to the allocation for that revised site plan for management of states, since one or more members might have conflicts of interest, so I gave the permission to notify Attorney Mayo that Mr. Andrews be contacted.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, four fifteen Thompson Street, um, this is the Peck property, there have been issues regarding treated, um, sledge there, um, the Board of Health had issued a cease and desist to Mr. Peck about the use of sledge on this property, permitting and a plan required, and neither exists right now, so Mr. Peck was sent this letter by the Board of Health last week, I doubt heard any, uh, update from Kathy Dryan, I'll check in with her to see what's going on with that. Let's see, the Halifax Middle Borough dog incident, this happened back in July, we were a little confused about jurisdiction. I talked with staff at the Mass Department of Agriculture Resources, which sounds funny, but they, the dog laws and everything got put under them, under the state government, they said that the Middle Borough Board Selectment has jurisdiction about this incident, because it involves a middle borough dog. So my recommendation would be that the owner of the Halifax dog file, complain with the Middle Borough Board Selectment, request a hearing with the board on the incident, the Halifax Board Selectment clearly wish to file a letter of support, supporting that request, that's essentially what the board's saying, that we want this to happen, but simply the board could support having the Middle Borough Board Selectment hold a hearing.
Would we have to allow our dog officer to go over to, as a witness in this, to testify? Uh, I would, I would, in that case, I would say, I'd like to send a letter, saying that we support the Board of Selectment in Middle Borough on, on the possible hearing on this particular case.
I'll second.
So all of them?
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Coramaze, I'm just gonna contact, because I and Azar are all about the need to get the entertainment permit, if he plans on having a Coramaze, who associated other activities on the farm off Hemlock. It's not the idea of preventing it from happening, it's simply making sure that he's gotten all the check-offs from our police and fire departments and Board of Health, because they end up having a different set of activities there every year, and they usually involve last-minute permitting as such, and I want to make sure that everything's been checked off on his end. I think it's a large success there, I think, you know, they get a good crowd there, but I just want to make sure for the public's sake that, um, everything is being done properly there. Motorcycle lease, um, the chief had talked with you several months ago about getting a motorcycle on this agreement, so, um, we scheduled this for five months for three hundred and twenty-five dollars per month, this is gonna come from a gift account the police department has, so it's not strictly out of budget. Uh, Attorney Mayo, it suggested some changes before the board signs the lease, which I'll incorporate into the lease agreement, and recommending the board have Troy sign the agreement later this week after the changes are added.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll circulate that, so, uh, just agreeing, so, okay, just a reminder, we do have, um, Arthur Milvee hearing in a couple weeks for white dog cranberry, um, sort of cholery to the whole discussion we just had about Middle Borough, but if, um, there are damages involved with a dog hearing, in a sense of if the dog owner or the dog that's injured wants to claim damages against the other owner, it's not up to the board to make a decision about damages, that the party, the injured party-
That's a simple matter, isn't it?
Right, well, I think maybe before the bylaw, not our bylaws, but the state statutes were changed, you know, seven or eight years ago, it may have been possible for the board to make a decision to include damages to one party or the other. I mean, if I went right back and looked at the state laws on the subject, it's clear that in order to collect them damages, the injured party has to go to court.
Yeah, we, we've only had one case that I can remember that, that were the injuries they were looking for, and, but normally, what we do is, we try to get the two people to agree in the room, if the owner and the, the owner of the dog and the victim agree on the terms, and then they go for it, but I've never had a case where we've had to order somebody to pay.
Yeah, the only exception to all that is, we're dealing with livestock, if a dog kills somebody's chickens, then it's within the board's jurisdiction to order damages be paid. We're gonna hear back from Comcast about, um, the language we wanted on the bills about the franchise fee, we're gonna hear back from Solitude about invasive leasing in Spots upon a pond. On the Council on Aging Director's search, the Screen Committee met last night, they reviewed all eighteen applications, they selected six candidates to interview, and interviews will be held on Tuesday and Wednesday here at Town Hall, starting at six o'clock. So I hope that they'll interview all six, I know that Irma's, I think, appointment so far, five out of six, we're just waiting for a confirmation from the sixth person. They'll select four people after the interviews, I think they intend to have those names to the board for the board's meeting on the tenth. We'll probably need to set up a special meeting for interviews for the candidates, um, we could, at the-
So the six, the six o'clock meeting next week on Tuesdays and Wednesdays is the-
Is to do the first round of interviews with the Screen Committee, not for the board.
Not for the board, okay.
I don't, you know-
Didn't want you to finish.
I'll talk with the board, probably, in, in the, in between, to figure out some possible dates.
Missed some? Good.
The, um, let's see, we haven't heard back from the, uh, order for the recycling bill four ninety-five, so we'll get that. Um, special town meeting, with the planning board hearing scheduled for September ninth, uh, tenth, that is, I secured the interest of parties, school, town council, town mayor, and said-
I'm gonna come in tomorrow with my stamp.
About possible dates for a special town meeting, those would be the seventh or the twenty-first, um, based on the responses, I'm recommending the board schedule a meeting for October twenty-first, and close the warrant September twenty-fourth.
Does the board agree?
Sure.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Um, on the unrestricted veh-
Did anyone have to take a motion or anything?
I made the motion.
Okay, so we get the answer.
I seconded.
Okay, we've got the answer, it's an A, yeah.
Close the warrant on September twenty-fourth?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All I, all I said was yes. I'm preparing to sign the fine notice to Mr. Harrison on the unrestricted vehicle to, for Plymouth Street, um, for the executive session, I have nothing on the Angeles versus Halifax case, so I don't know, need to go in executive session there. Um, I mean, on the patrol officer grievance, that's gotten settled, I just need to write up the paperwork, so I don't need to talk to the board about that. Waterman grievance, there's no information, so I don't need to go in, possible new union, um, I can go into the executive session for a minute, if I don't think it's necessary, um, that's moving along as it should be, in terms of establishing which positions are in the new bargaining unit, um, without any problems, I mean, I think the union are, and council, myself, have been on the same page on that, so unless the board wants to-
You had one note about the patrolmen's-
Right, which the patrolmen's grievance, which I said just now is settled.
Settled.
Yeah, there's, I, sorry, I didn't, I left news about that in your piles, uh, yes, um, what hap, but basically, I, without-
They, they, we threatened them to take the thing to, take the thing to arbitration, and they said no.
Okay, um, I can talk, if necessary, I can talk to you later, Gordon, we don't have to go in executive session. But yeah, it's settled, we just have to write up the language and everything worked out to, I think to everybody's mutual benefit, let's put it that way. Um, so I don't, I do not see a need unless the board has a need to go in executive session or anything.
I have a need to call, call for adjournment.
Is there anything else, Pam, with you? You did the road opening?
I'm good.
Liaison list is done, they're working on signing?
We're good, we're good.
We only need two signatures on those, right?
Nice try.
Well, you have to sign two-thirds of them, that means. Each sign two-thirds of them.
Oh, God.
Now, you have to do one through a hundred.
So when my signature doesn't match up to the signature card, am I gonna have to re-sign?
Yes.
This is not bad, oh, okay, we're good.
I can have John Chabon's signature.
No, that's not a signature. That's a scribble.
That's his X, right?
I'm sure my penmanship teachers would think horrible thoughts.
So I don't think they teach cursive at the elementary school anymore?
No, they don't, no.
Teach cursing, but not cursive.
So, I mean, we have nothing else that the board wants to go and adjourn itself?
I would move to re-adjourn.
Second, second.
All in flavor?
Yes.